Because there's no permit there in hold. But then according to paperwork, they're in court.
Okay, we put the two thousand twenty's edit request and one amendment to the two thousand twenty-one. EDC. Request. Need to know that those are the two thousand twenty-two requests add up to four hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred fifty-four, fifty. You will be receiving money for next year in four hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred twenty-eight.
Can you give me those two numbers?
What you will be receiving is four hundred ninety-two.
Four, four ninety-four, four fifty-four, fifty. That's our number. So that's everybody's request.
But what you'll be getting is four hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred twenty-eight. Eight, four nine two, two twenty-eight.
It's a twenty-nine thousand eight hundred dollar increase, which is good.
Say again, please?
Twenty-nine thousand eight oh one, that's your increase.
What's the minimum for the port, the eighteen hundred dollars, is that because they didn't need to use it?
No, they presented it with that meaning to request it for painting and missing things here. They did for the park, the basement, I believe. And I believe there was LED lighting involved.
And if not a development, that was a two-year contract.
Glosses for years ago.
We should have yours maybe over there above that request.
Are we taking this up today, gentlemen?
I'd like to do that. It doesn't have to be done today.
No, like this.
While we're here.
Yeah.
There's really seven and a half million people there.
Sometimes I get confused on what actually edit requests can be used for. My question. For the Carol Manor, not Carol. The Madam Carol Edit Bank. That's privately owned, right?
Yes.
And we can use the edit money for that?
You got to have some kind of public benefit, so that's a good question.
Well, the benefit would be is that they, they won't be walking across the road, they won't be going under the bridge.
Safety.
Just a safety factor.
From being up there quite a bit this year, I can see that the Madam Carol is on the way out as far as attendance and.
Oh yeah, they've done, they've done a wonderful job over there, but I just don't want to
Violate.
Violate anything or, or have somebody else come to me and says, well, you give it to them, why don't you give it to us?
Well, if you really have that next year, you better believe that.
It's a state highway.
Yeah, it is a state highway, so I don't know if they'd work with the state to get that underneath that bridge or not.
So the money is for what? I, I wasn't paying attention.
There's a highway bridge there, and they have a parking lot on one side, and the boat is on the other side of the highway. Pretty, pretty dark, pretty heavily cattle highway. And it's a dark area, there's not much in the way of street lamps, and their business is late night a lot of them, and people are walking across this highway, we're in there, where there's, it's pretty fat rapid, I don't know what speed it is there, but it's, it's a forty-five. So their request is to put like a pier underneath the, underneath the bridge, so that people walking from one to the other will be able to walk under and not across the highway. Now, you're gonna have, I don't know if that's, he didn't, I didn't understand if this is handicap accessible, pier underneath there, or anything like that.
It would be, yes.
Pardon me?
It would be, yes.
It would be?
You're the owner, right?
Yes.
It just seems like an EDC thing.
It does, so.
You know, I think it can be structured as a grant, and have a grant agreement, and it's based upon the safety factor and the economic development benefits, but that could apply to a lot of future, I'm just saying.
I think it would benefit the residents too. I, I'm not, I'm not against, I just don't want to violate any rules.
Right.
And plus, it's been a waterlot down there, where they allowed to build underneath that bridge, because if you start moving structure under that bridge, what's gonna happen there? If you start drilling holes.
State permits involved, right, so you're a highway, right?
Yes, so we have approval through Seth Flack, who owns the property lines under all of the waterway, as well as the easements going up, anything that would be in a floodplain, and the only requirement through the highway is just a construction permit when we start working, because we're not touching the highway infrastructure at all, that's why we went this route, as opposed to looking to develop a pedestrian bridge over the structure.
My opinion is, there needs to be an agreement, a grant agreement, since it's a private developer, and it needs to incorporate the elements that we take it out totally subsidizing the private.
Is this the total cost of the whole project?
That is, yes. I guess I'd also mention that, and I'm not sure if there's a different way you'd like me to structure it, but I'm happy to, but most of the people in that area that, that move between the Sportsman, Copacetic, and the other businesses would be using this, as most of them use our auxiliary parking lot already for access for things like this, so.
So you're saying it's just the Madam Carol?
Correct, yes, so anybody coming from, to, between these businesses, there's some other businesses that have opened up, are welcome to use this option.
How are you functioning now with the water going down?
It's terrible. I mean, I, we had a great summer, and everything that we have made is now going into keeping the boat off the rocks, so fighting that legally and physically has been quite a challenge.
I love your saying completely on that.
Yeah.
This is a terrible situation.
Yeah.
The other possibility is if, beyond development, if they saw merit in this to be with county, let me, professionally dedicated to this project, and had that, had the EDC doing it, do a grant. That was funded by a capital, that was funded by Ed.
Well, I don't know how the general public in those areas would feel that we gave, we paid for the whole project. Since there will be more business owners, I'm willing to give some money to, to help it, but I don't think I want to fund the whole thing, personally. That's speaking from the ones that don't come to work and utilize the, the bridge and stuff like that. I love the Madam Carol, beautiful, I like watching her man out in the water. It's still privately owned, and there's private businesses there. I mean, I think we need to help them, because what they're wanting to do is make Carroll County better, but I would like to be able to fund the whole thing.
Can I make a quick comment too? I mean, even from the tourism standpoint, obviously you can imagine what it does bring to Carroll County. It's right on the cusp of us, but you've got people who are voting, that can park at the Sportsman and walk over. I just think there's a, a huge synergy that's created by what they bring to our community. I don't know how many hundreds and hundreds of people we do have this year, but it had to have been a lot that aren't from here. So it's just kind of, I mean, from an economic development standpoint, it surely is one of the best tourism assets we've got, even though it is privately owned.
Yes.
Could you maybe consider making a motion to match an EDC contribution from A, from EDC up to a certain dollar amount? That way you're showing that you're in support of it, but.
That would be a, a way to structure it, that's for sure.
Before you spend our money, what are they asking for?
Wait a minute, what?
Before you spend EDC money, what are they asking?
Forty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars.
Forty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars.
But would you increase what you give EDC, what you would expect them to pass along?
I would be willing to do at least half.
Okay.
I would just add, if there is another way, again, if, if we had the funds or were in a position to do this as a private entity, I would, I have it done already. We have a number of other challenges that have come up. But if there is another way for me to structure this, I'm open, because at the end of the day, my biggest fear here is someone's gonna get killed on that highway, walking in between, and we're talking about upwards of five hundred to seven hundred and fifty people crossing that highway every week, so.
Right, I agree. But I know I've, I've had some phone calls saying that, you know, it's private, so I gotta, you know, the people who put me here, I gotta speak for them too. I love it, I love that area for a lot, I really do, but. And the safety factors, like you said, is a big issue, and terrorism brings money to us. So I'm, I'm willing to do half if we can get EDC to do the other, because we don't have enough money to fund everything here anyway. We're short. Or if we, if we do go and help them, we just don't take away from anything else, we just take it from the Madam Carol. Because that's what we're short. But still, I think EDC might do the same, and you're saying should they go and help them out? I think they will, I really do, I think they will. I think EDC has been, has a good turnaround, and they've got somebody in there that's willing to work and help the boat.
I would like to hear the position of the EDC on this, before we make a motion, because they also represent the entire county.
Correct.
And I, I've had some negative phone calls on this. I know that there are other tourist drawing businesses in that area by the God, that could use money also. And I know that there are other businesses that draw in people from around the county, in other places around the county, not just on the lake, that could use a lot of money too.
I just think maybe we're okay in Canada first.
Well, we ought, there's no doubt in my mind, we ought. Next year, this list will grow this long, of, of all the businesses that are great businesses, that we want to keep, all of which are short of money. I, I could just see that. And, and I say that, and at the same time think, gosh, I'd like to help the Madam Carol get this done.
If you remember why last year, you, you rendered your edit funding at the end of the year for the added EDC part.
Yes, we did.
Sixty thousand, and we matched, I think we matched a grant.
Didn't we do something like that for the Burlington Festival too, did we?
No, they came in.
No, that was just for marketing, for marketing.
They came in after we gave money to the old settlers.
Right.
They come in the following year, and we gave that money to.
Okay, so there's another year from now.
Yeah. So I'd make a motion to table this until we hear from EDC on their, thank you. When's your next meeting?
Oh, it's, it's not, it would be after your next meeting.
In October?
Yes, so we wouldn't be able to get back to you on this until like the, your second meeting in October.
In the eighteenth of October? If I got the video right.
One thing that I have learned through all these years is the government, which we are, moves at the speed of a glacier, so we, we by the time we pull everybody's opinion in time, it's gonna go by because of like this meeting, my one meeting, and until this meeting, and then.
Right.
But I think we need to give careful consideration to this.
No disrespect, okay?
No, and I, I completely understand it, and respect it as well, I'm just, I guess this was the route, based on my research, I thought was the correct one, so if there's a different way or different communication I need to put forward through EDC or through anyone else, just please let me know. If there's a way we can, there's another grant out there I can find that helps support this as well. There's a portion of it, you know, you say, can't do a hundred percent, whatever that answer is, let me know, so I can keep trying to go forward with.
Well, I'll tell you what, we, we just, we just missed some of it, because I was at a meeting with the EDC director, we're at, and the mayor, where they were going over a boatload of money that's come in to the four counties around, around, typically three counties that surround them. And this should have been in that batch, it should, should have been in there, so that, because I think this would rate it high.
Can I go back to the point that we need to find the grant writer?
We need to, we, we need, I'm not sure that curbside is doing what I always thought they were doing, and for benefit of you, curbside is a group that we belong to, that I thought was our grant writers and all that, and yet and I've been to a big one meeting of theirs, so we got.
Is, is there a way that you, if you're comfortable with the rest of the edit proposals, that you could approve those?
There is.
I know that Beth said that you can amend it later on, to add this.
That could be done.
And I think I would like EDC to talk with the Chamber and see if they can work out something between our two organizations to figure out how, how to.
Just because you're privy today doesn't mean it's private. You have to take.
Yeah, that's your counsel.
Yes, and then.
Well, you know they're not gonna approve this one right here.
Right. The last two years, they've got on two hundred thousand for the highway cut.
I know they're banking on knowing for next year, but they're really not going to know for next year until the council is done. Which then they will have to advertise it for next year, and then the.
So you're looking possibly November?
Oh yeah.
Could be, I don't know.
I think, I think, just me speaking, I think we're all good for this one here, on funding the whole thing.
Well, I have a question. The Old Settlers Festival, I keep hearing all these stories about how the Delphi Chamber's going away.
I will say that the Deer Creek, Delphi Chamber did not request this, if you look, it's from Carroll County.
Settlers community.
Yeah, and they changed the name of who's requesting.
Oh, it's always been forming from the Chamber, hasn't it?
Right, yes, and the Chamber doesn't want to do it.
Yes.
If that's a new organization, I'm perfectly involved in some of this, you might be sure that that's a 501(c)(3) if you're going to be funding them.
Do, does it have to be? They're not a 501(c)(3).
And you seem to be having trouble giving them money directly to the settlement.
And also that the EDC has an increase, I just want you to make sure you knew that.
What, right.
The EDC does have an increase, and we need to do that.
It is higher. Well, the EDC's a 501(c)(7), so.
Six, yes. As a.
And they're one, they're one of the two-year contracts.
Well, we used to give them a three.
Used to give them a four.
Used to be, it was behind four.
So I found out that the Delphi Chamber is indeed dissolving this month, it sounded like, but they did find somebody to take over Old Settlers, but they didn't tell me who it was, so.
I, I thought it was DART that was taking it over.
What's DART?
It's the Domestic Animal Rescue Team with Erica.
It had animal control.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, I'm not quite, animal control?
She works for us.
She works for us, she has that.
The request is for Matt Peaking.
Okay, that's, okay, so Matt's.
They hadn't found anybody yet at the time.
The Chamber.
Yes.
As far as dissolving goes, we have been talking about it, it has not been taken place, we have not set a date, we still have a board meeting and a membership meeting before we can do anything of such a sort. We are giving up Old Settlers, I believe you are correct, and DART is who's going to be taking it over. There's, I don't know what's on our board exactly right now, five of us or something like that, but the only five that participate, they can't get any outside help, I guess, from members or so forth, they'll put all these events, and all of us are business owners, and time doesn't allow us to dedicate what we need to make all these functions.
Right, it's their group.
Yep, so, I don't know if that helps clarify anything, but the Chamber is not the one requesting, we are handing it over to DART, I believe is.
Well, that's not you ask for this.
Right.
It's just, I mean, I.
Whether or not they're.
I didn't even know DART was finished being organized.
Whether they're a 501, I have no idea, we have not had a meeting since the last of Old Settlers, so I'm a little in the dark myself, and I'm one of the board members, so.
Well, so, that's my point, is that, that is one that we may want to come back to and amend our, our budget for this, but at this time, I don't think we know where to hand the three thousand dollars to, so. Well, we know, okay, we know who requested it, but.
And what he's calling it is the Carroll County Old Settlers Festival.
I don't want to be the ones who kill old settlers either, so.
No, I understand.
We're gonna amend it, the other payment class. So I guess, I go along with Aunt Mary and said, I think that we could go down through here and grant every one of these, except for those two, and then take them into further consideration. Now, my question to you two gentlemen is, are we including, we got Carroll County parks for three thousand for eighteen hundred, so we're actually talking about forty-eight hundred for them, is that what we're talking about?
Well, this is eighteen hundred from the last.
This is for this year, if you could do that separately, I would appreciate that.
Right. What, okay, explain to me how that works.
You're amending your twenty twenty-one edit.
For the eighteen hundred?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then three thousand for the twenty twenty-two.
Right.
I got it.
That's, you know, completely different.
Okay, my first motion would be amend the Carroll County parks for eighteen hundred for twenty twenty-one, for them to redo the, the basement of the park.
A second, okay, so we have a motion, we, you have it right on here, twenty twenty-one amendment, I just didn't process it. Okay, I have a motion to amend twenty twenty-one budget for Ed, to include eighteen hundred dollars for the park.
Correct.
And I have a second for that, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Now, we can look at the rest of the whole thing here.
Are you, are we wanting to do a, a longer contract with EDC, or you want to stay with the one?
That's up to you guys, what do you want to do?
Well, I, I was never a big fan of the EDC for a longer time, but I think they're going in the right direction.
I do too.
I really do, so I'm in favor of doing it here.
What was it up last year?
Hundred and forty-five.
Yeah, a hundred forty-seven.
They raised it just a little, I think it went up because of property, people.
It tells you in your request why it was up.
By the, probably.
A hundred forty-eight, I'm sorry, a hundred forty-eight, two ninety-one is what we paid them last year.
A hundred forty-eight, two ninety-one. So we're sixteen thousand dollars.
So we're paying them eleven fifty, for example. Possibly seeing our. Twenty thousand, four hundred and twenty-two.
We don't pay them the whole twenty thousand, we pay them on the ones that are not in the other.
Right, and it leaves a population of fourteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-three times that by eleven point five. Which is a hundred sixty-four, two fifty-four, fifty. So I'm in favor of going ahead with EDC, because I think.
And you're in favor of doing it for two years?
Yes.
Well, as I said, I recently attended a meeting with the mayor and with our new EDC director, and I think James did a good job, and so he was on top of the situation there, I was, I was in the dark, and he was on top of it, and I appreciated that very much, so.
He even called three out of the blue and said, hey, this is what's going on, never had that.
No, no, no.
Never, even when I sat on the council, I've never had that.
Even when you're in that office, you see.
That was outside of these requests, though.
That's why.
It's a two-year agreement outside of these requests.
Yes, it is.
They're filling the contract above, request could be two thousand, point three.
Right.
Yeah, they have, well, if we sign a contract, we're, we have to give it to them this year, last year. But they can't go more, if they needed to.
But that needs to be a version contract.
Have you read the contract Ted on that EDC, for EDC?
No.
Well, I just put another little funnel on it, I like.
This is how we've been in the past, I know that sounds like a, whatever.
So I still think I go a different one. I don't see what we would have heard tabled, but the next.
You don't be able to just do the whole thing, and then, and then deal with the two-year contract things?
Well, just, just table everything until we hear back from EDC on the Madam Carol, because to me, I think it'll be easier on our order, you've got enough on your plate.
That does not matter, I'm not gonna take them.
No, I'm just saying, I mean, with everything going on, I'm, I Ted needs to go through the contract, I know it's one we've had before, but we've never signed a contract out of blue without these.
Can I ask what the difference in the funding is that we're talking about? Like, how much are you thinking the EDC needs to pick up? For Madam Carol?
Um, it's forty-eight thousand seven hundred, so we're divided by two.
Okay, okay.
Probably willing to do half.
Okay.
Because it is for the safety of our people, for the herd.
Right, right, okay.
Unless, unless Chamber wants to throw in two, we can go third.
How much are you going to give me for next year?
So, my question, table this, you're.
Just a second. Okay, so I got a motion.
They just said they're not going to meet until, so it would have to be.
Be the last meeting of.
The eighteenth.
Be the eighteenth of October, when we find, we'll do the final basis. Does that hurt you guys any? I mean, I'm pretty sure we're gonna do it, we just want to make sure we got all our ducks in a row.
Sure, I mean, the funding's for next year, so it's not like we're gonna be spending it between now and then.
Okay. I understand you want to have your ducks in a row.
I always like having things off the table, so.
The big ducks have got to make the little ducks late.
But I don't know who's the big duck and who's the little duck.
Ted's the big duck, he's got a little one.
Okay, so what are we doing?
Well, I got a motion and a second to table, and we have not voted yet.
Table two, October eighteenth?
Yes, that's right here.
Yes.
Okay, so I call for a vote, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay.
Maybe we have some good news for the Madam Carol.
Appreciate it, thank you.
And then by then, my phone's gone.
Well, we want you to know that we appreciate your business.
Yeah, and if there's anything between now and then, if I need to speak with the other departments or organizations, I'm happy to, or tour, display, or if there's other, again, other ideas, I'm just trying to fix one problem I know that we have with the businesses there, so. A safety issue, a pretty serious one.
You, you need to be in contact with them. So are we ready to go to the next thing on here, Peterson?
That is our Gatsby thirty-four contract with Peterson Consulting Services, and you do have that in your budget for next year, this is for next year. It's the same contract that we've had.
This is another we have to ask Ted, he's been through this contract.
This is the same one that's we've done every year. This is the same one that's we've done every year.
It makes me gasp. Huh? It's okay? For the benefit of people out here, Gatsby is a, is a.
I know.
Required, uh state required things we have where we have to go through evaluations of all our properties. Keep them up to date. First year we did this, it was horrendous trying to go through every piece of property, every law, mobile, everything.
Well, that it's not, it doesn't do the harm of deals as such, normally. That's kind of the easiest one. Um is the right ways and roads and how thick the gravel is and how thick the pavement is.
Right.
I remember Ramsey and I fretting over that, so we first started it wasn't my parents in Manhattan, in Chicago.
Well, I'll make a motion to go ahead and Peterson Consulting Services, Gatsby. But it just needs one signature.
Okay, so I got a motion and a second to engage Peterson for another year, so I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
The next is Barnes and Thornburg. Ted has, um, they want to serve as counsel regarding the Corum State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, which is the more recognizable as the ARP fund, American Rescue Fund. Ted has looked at this, um, this contract with him. It's a letter of acceptance, I believe.
Are you involved in this one? With this woman's work or with Ben?
No, he's not.
The drift, I haven't.
But there is a lot of reporting being done. There's a lot of cocaine to be done and they know what is going to be okay and what's not. Um also, we still have steps to make. We still need to do like many, we still need, we've got the part of our money. We have put it in a special fund so we can track it. We've also put it in a different bank account, so the interest can be applied to there. That part has been done, but we have not made our plan and we need to get that established.
So this is different from what you.
Right.
Okay.
The initial plan was to care is that, that our initial money that we got, this is the second wave of money that came from President Biden. Biden's trillion dollars that he signed and that's part of our American Rescue Plan money. We got the first installment of one point nine three million. As long as we meet our wickets in all of our reporting periods, we will get the second installment next year.
They want twenty five hundred dollars a month.
Can I check with other counties and that's probably.
And where's this coming from out of the budget, okay?
Um right now it'd be, this year it'd be out of professional services.
Do we have that?
And one of the start, that would be next one. Um they're going to keep us in compliance, so.
So then we need to throw a board together?
Pardon?
Then we have to have a committee or a board put together for this too?
On what we would like to spend this month.
This is part of the phone call, the thing you're receiving, the phone calls on from the unincorporated areas.
Yeah.
Asking if this could be used for the lighted sign that Deer Creek was asking for or the fire station, the Cutler, Doc, assisting Cutler getting their fire station.
Or just today, broadband.
Right.
And the broadband guys. That one is definitely in that. That was one of the four priorities. That was listed in the initial aspect of the American Rescue Plan.
I would suggest you go online and just Google ARP Indiana and see what other counties and cities are doing with money because there are just a whole host of, you know, projects going on and using it. It'll give you an idea of what other people are using it for.
What is that site again?
Just Google ARP, American Rescue Plans Funding Indiana, and it'll come up to tell you what Marion County's doing with it, what Indianapolis is doing with it, Kokomo. You can Google that and get some ideas and.
We'll do the same thing. Maybe like, you know, like we use it for and what you cannot do. Or maybe that we can just send an email, like we did the CARES Act, that's what Mike did. Send an email to one of the lawyers here and they say yes or no before we proceeded with it. So, um, this is our first step.
That's definitely in there, but. I don't know if it specifically says Cutler Fire Department, but it does.
Right, but I mean, that was.
That's something I'd like to see.
When we first started, when that money first started getting talked about, Cutler Fire had called me and asked me to come out and talk about the ARP money along with Deer Creek and a couple of unincorporated areas. And I said, you know, we didn't know what the money was going to be used for. That's why I came back and talked to you guys one on one and told the people in the trust, the area trustees to reach out to you guys and start putting the, the ideas in your heads. Because we didn't know exactly everything that we could use the money on, because the treasury is constantly changing what you can, what it can be used for. And using Barnes and Thornburg, just like we did for CARES Act.
Right.
Is very good because they have the ends and they know what it can be used for.
Well, I'll make a motion to enter the contract.
Motion and second to enter the contract. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Could you, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. You see that abuse here?
Abuse.
Okay, the next thing is the ratifications of what happened at the last meeting. Um I'm going to let Ted kind of, I think he has something on that.
You got any, do they have that?
Yes, that David Chen's.
Number.
David Chen's one. But it's with the claims, um.
Executive Order twenty twenty one dash oh five.
I have some deferments, I'm sick.
Yeah, two different ones.
What, what are we doing now?
Ratifying the actions that were taken by Steve on September the seventh. So that there was a disruption of payroll, a payment of vendors and so forth. Uh that called him on the phone when I was president in her office when she talked to Steve and he took four actions. He took four actions, made him pay the bills and so forth and pay everybody. So that's what this executive order is. Uh the law, Indiana statute, this applies not just to counties, it applies to cities, towns, wherever. That action taken by an officer, uh that could, when the board is not meeting, uh if it's, if it's, if it's a, it's an action that the board could have done in a meeting, if it was able to convene, uh can be taken by that officer and, but it must be ratified by the board. And that's what this does.
Did we get that one up covered?
It's number, oops, five.
Oh, I guess it's six or seven.
There's, there's a third one. There's oh five is the first one. Okay, so we need to ratify this.
Yeah, because she called me on the phone after I got the text that you were ill and Lauren's unavailable, does on my way here.
I called you that with Ted.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, so I need a motion. A motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passed. Thank you, Steve, for taking care of that.
You're welcome.
We have claims here from uh September seventh.
That that is assigned.
That we need uh to ratify.
The last thing that I have is.
Wait, wait, have we done this? Claims?
Yes.
Don't we have to have a vote on these?
No.
No, you just did that.
That's what that does?
Yeah.
So we don't have to go through these and sign?
You'll have to sign them.
Sign them, but we're just going to do it right now.
You can do that.
Aye.
One of us will say to start signing them and we'll pass them over.
All right.
We're not going to mess them up.
The next thing is we had to reschedule an executive session.
Yes.
So I need, I need to know that day so we can get that finished.
When are you going to do it?
Monday, you leave it out for me.
What's that?
Monday evening. Anything else, I'll make.
After three thirty or three thirty?
Yeah.
Okay, whatever you guys can work it out.
Put the joke. We got here before the hour of it. Right, well, it's supposed to rain next few days, so I know you'll be able to make the field until Thursday, probably.
As long as you and I agree on it. I might, I might want to follow.
Should be after this time.
Yeah.
But I'm pretty sure you're good.
When is the three thirty fourth?
You keep, she gonna do it?
I'm not, no.
Oh, that's right, they're closing on that.
Well, but, but I still have appointments.
We need to change that. Thank you.
No, we don't. Let's, let's, let's just keep to the subject here. You got half hour.
Can we try thirty?
Okay, so the twenty second is out. What, what are we doing on the twenty third?
Twenty thirty, three thirty.
Twenty thirty, three thirty?
All right, you want four?
I'd rather have it four. I have something at two fifteen that day than involve three offices.
Okay, Beth, what time you want us to have it?
I said four o'clock would be fine.
Four o'clock. Four o'clock. Twenty thirty, four o'clock. Would you like?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we might be taking a little on that. Need a motion?
Need to break the session on twenty third at four o'clock.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, before you move on, could you please explain or share what happened with emergency paid sick leave that was ratified or was approved?
I, yes, that was part of the ratification that they extended it to September thirtieth.
Okay, so what, how, what is it?
It's the same thing that we've had in the past that expired on August thirty first to pay sick, um COVID sick pay until September thirty.
They got a, a new eighty hours?
No.
Start over?
No.
So if someone's already.
It's just a continuation.
So if someone's already used eighty hours, they don't get a new hour?
Right.
Okay, so we've already done that?
Yes.
Okay. Steve took care of it.
Yes. We only went out one month.
And so we're down to Ted Johnson. Julie, Julie.
Yeah, uh you tabled this from the, from the previous week. I recommended that you get an update, refresh of the appraisal. There's an obligation, we have an obligation to pay the, to uh, the, under the Atlantic acquisition statute to uh make the fair offer. And it's quite a, how to make legally, it's not a, it's been long enough. I talked to the uh, uh, a lot of firms in cyber, this is probably a good idea. So there, there is a document here that should be in your stack to engage the praiser, the investor. To be refreshed as a praiser. It's not a full rephrase, it's just checking comps to see if there's been any change in, in the market that would warrant a change in the uh, uniform landing acquisition offer that was previously made to be property owners. And that's probably going to have to, probably find it because I don't have my comp.
Um my thing is, they, we're going to meet with the council. What do they say we can?
That's being worked on right now. Uh the council.